Thank you, everyone, and thank you for being here today. With regard to today's agenda, we obviously have two items to discuss, and that has been publicized. I'm going to take them out of order, however, in this case, in part because Mr. Suli and Ms. Shremph are here to specifically talk about Mr. DeMarco's bill or Councilman DeMarco's bill.
Chairwoman, do you want to have a call to order for the meeting and then do the roll call first?
Yes, thank you for politely reminding me that I didn't start the meeting properly, and I appreciate that.
It's all good.
I'm conducting this like I do in my house. Nobody really, there's no order to it. So at this point, I would like to call the meeting to order and take a roll call of the members present.
Mr. Bonnerati.
Here.
Mr. DeMarco.
Here.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Ms. Nakaradi Chapkus.
Here.
Mr. Paul Mary. Ms. Pritsia. Chairwoman Filiagi.
Here.
We also have by phone, Mr. Macy, Mr. Palmasina, President Katina, and Ms. Hallam.
Thank you very much. So I won't read it again, but I will say that we are going to speak about Councilman DeMarco's ordinance first because we do have the guest speakers, Mr. Suli and Ms. Shremph are here, to speak on those bills. Ms. Hallam's ordinance is also, another reason to put it a little behind Mr. Councilman DeMarco's is because it's a little more complicated due to the breadth of its roots. And in addition, we've had a lot of information to digest since last week's public hearing on assessments. And I expect that there will be quite a few questions and significant discussion relating to Councilperson Hallam's bill as a result. Anyone, however, with us today will be welcome to comment on either bill, of course. But at this point, let's begin with bill number 13056-24. Before we start, I would like to also welcome Mr. Fabian as an invited guest. And I appreciate that, that you're here with us.
Sure.
And we will also, before we begin, make a motion for the approval of minutes.
That's 13069-24, motion to approve the minutes of the April 18, 2024 meeting of Committee on Assessment Practices.
So move.
Second. Motion to... Approval of minutes passes.
All in favor.
All in favor. Good lord, I... All in favor.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. I hope I'm not being judged on this. Let's just get some things done. I guess at this point, then, should we introduce Councilman DeMarco so he can speak?
Chair, read his bill.
About the bill, and after Jared would read it into the record.
That is bill number 13056-24, an ordinance of the County of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania amending Article 210 of the Administrative Code of Allegheny County entitled Assessment Standards and Practices, Section 5-210.09 entitled certification and non-county-wide revaluation or reassessment tax years in order to establish a mechanism for prospective property assessment appeal filing sponsored by councilmembers DeMarco, Macy, Katina, and Filiagi.
Councilman DeMarco, at this point, I'd like to turn this over, the discussion, over to you, or since you can introduce the bill, or you can talk about the bill, and then we do have two experts to speak about the bill.
Sure, thank you very much, Chairwoman Filiagi. The reason why I put this bill up, it has a lot to do with housekeeping. Right now, assessments and potential reassessments are all front and center here. We're learning more about them. And one of the problems that I, not I uncovered, but came to light here was in Allegheny County, we are the last of the 67 counties in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to take and have an appeal deadline. And what happens is, we actually issue our tax bills, send them out in January of the year, and then we have till March 31 to file an appeal. And by the time we file an appeal and hearings are held, many of the other taxing municipalities in George Dixon, whether it be the school districts or the municipalities, are already well into their budget years, and what we're finding out is taking place. There are numerous articles in the press about, like the city, for example, where they're issuing refunds and the county has had to issue refunds. What I'm trying to do by this bill is to move the deadline up so that we will know appeals can be filed, can be filed, results will be known before municipalities finalize their budgets. This will allow them to budget with some degree of certainty as to what their revenues are going to be in the tax years, and it will prevent them from having to issue refunds, which will then take additional money out of their budget. So it's more of a housecleaning item, I guess I would say, to try to get our house in order. And so that the proper method here would be, we take and assess, they appeal, and then they pay the tax, as opposed to sort of backwards where we're taking assessing taxing and then appealing. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions, Chairwoman Filiagi.
No, I think this is, again, as you already said, a housekeeping matter that makes its common sense, and it does make a lot of sense. I imagine that you've, you've had a lot of input from some of the experts that we've been dealing with as of late. I know we have two people here that would like to speak on that issue. I have no further questions of you, Councilman DeMarco. I don't know if anyone else has. Does anyone else have any further questions specifically, or would we prefer to hear from the experts first?
Well, before we go to the expert, and Jared, what would be the appropriate time for me to explain the amendment that we?
At your discretion.
Because with this bill, with this bill, I moved the deadline up. But what I hadn't done in the bill was put the beginning date for the appeal period to start. So the amendment, all it does is correct the oversight that I had in the initial bill, which was introduced last Tuesday, or the last meeting, and it corrects it. So now we have a period by which the appeals, the start of the appeal period takes place and when the deadline occurs.
So if I may interject, Councilman DeMarco, yes, by way of informing everyone who is listening and with us today, we did receive an amendment, marked Amendment DeMarco I, which does take basically just one line and changes it to give us that deadline period. And because it was not, by formality, because it wasn't given the 48-hour, wasn't presented 48 hours prior to, are you asking to have us consider this today? Make the amendment and basically vote on a waiver to amend the, I mean, to waive the 48-hour rule so that we can actually vote on what you consider to be a complete bill, which is your Amendment DeMarco I?
Yes, Chairwoman, and the reason, and I will make the motion for that, but the reason to do so is this. Because we're moving the deadline up from, just from March 31 of 2025 to October 31 of this year, I wanted the opportunity for this bill to be voted on prior, get it out before the summer break, to give the public as much notice as possible of this prospective change so that anybody interested in potentially appealing would have the time to be able to do so, but give us the opportunity to educate them on. And that's why I put this forward, and that's why I would ask the committee's indulgence in waiving the 48-hour rule so that we could take an amends so that we have that 60-day period from the time prior to the deadline that appeals can be filed.
Yes, that makes perfect sense, Councilman DeMarco. So at this point, should we be voting on the amendment?
The motion, but not a second.
I'll second that.
I'll second.
Then this is the motion to waive the 48-hour requirement to introduce the bill. So.
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
Councilman DeMarco, could you just lay out, just a real quick question? Could you just lay out what the updated window of time would be now?
It will be 60 days, Councilman Grisbeck. So we're moving the deadline from the 31st day of March of 2025 to October 1, 2024. And that's in all countywide or non-revaluation or reassessment years. And then the following year would be moved up to September 1. So the appeal period can start, it will be 60 days prior to the deadline. So for example, with the expiration date here of October 1, that would mean people would be able to begin to file their appeals on August 1.
Chair.
Understood, thank you very much.
Yes, Chair, Councilwoman Nakaradi Chapkus, did you have a comment? Or question?
Are you asking for que... Yes. Are you asking for questions on the 48-hour rule right now, or are you asking for?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying, thank you.
If there are no further.
I do have a question about the amendment whenever that time is appropriate.
Thank you. So if there are no further questions on the, what is on the floor before us now is to waive the 48-hour rule to introduce the amendment. Can we take a, a roll call vote on that issue, to waive the 48-hour rule to introduce the amendment today?
Member Philly, or Chairwoman Filiagi, Member Pritsia has joined the meeting.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon.
On the motion to waive the 48-hour rule, Mr. Bonnerati.
Yes.
Mr. DeMarco.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Nakaradi Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary. Ms. Pritsia.
Yeah.
And Chairwoman Filiagi.
Yes.
I have six, no nays, motion passes.
Great, thank you. So now we can begin additional information on Amendment I, that is now the, the, bill before us is Amendment DeMarco I, which includes the 60-day period, the time limit, which was essential, Councilman DeMarco, and the experts thought it was essential to add, to complete the bill. Would you like to add anything more, Councilman DeMarco?
I, I, I'm open for questions, and I believe Councilwoman Nakaradi Chapkus had a question about the amendment.
Okay. Councilwoman Nakaradi Chapkus, would you like to ask your question now?
Um, sure, because I think it's something probably that our experts can address whenever they're presenting to us. My, I, I appreciate this coming before us, and it sounds like it's very much appropriate. The only question I have is, by moving this time period up from March to October, there could be then, I guess, a potential influx of appeals to be processed in a shorter window of time? And is there the capacity with the appeals, the Assessment Appeals Board, to be able to handle that volume? That could potentially exist. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nakaradi Chapkus. I agree, and I'm sure that the experts are prepared to address that. Does anyone else, else have any questions they would like to introduce at this point to give, make fodder, or give to the experts who are going to speak on the bill? Oh, yes, sir.
So as I read this, the deadline of October 1, does that mean that people, home buyers who buy homes in October, November, December, will not have the ability to appeal until 2026?
That is an issue that has been raised. I've actually, someone's asked me that question as well, and I think we do have an answer.
It appears that's where it's written.
Right.
That's why I asked that.
Right.
Well, they would have, they, the way it is written, I believe, they would file their appeal for 2020, in 2025, for 2026, that's what I was going to say.
Can I make a note?
They purchased in 24.
But can I just make a note that right now, with the system we have now, if you buy your house on April 15, you're waiting until the next year to file an appeal anyway.
So it's potentially capturing, it's, it's the same issue that we face now, it's just the timeline is different.
And just to keep in mind, BPAR does accept sales agreements because you have constructive title at that point. So if you, if you have a sales agreement that's before October 1, you can file an appeal for 2025.
That is great to know, and something that we can communicate would be worth communicating to the public in those scenarios. So thank you for bringing that forward.
And with us, we will promote it.
Yes, and it is about, let's face it, it's about the communication and how we roll this out to the public.
Bottom line, people file appeals. Over the last 30 years, we average 8,000, 9,000 a year, appeals. In reassessment, you're 100,000 plus. But this year, we had 7,000 appeals. You know, all we're doing is moving the appeals deadline in line with what the other counties do, which none of them have been complaining for decades.
So before we get to that, Mr. Fabian, have, are you satisfied, at least with the answer that, that we gave you at this point?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Should we, are there anyone, is there anyone on the phone that has any other questions? But, but we are ready to get to the experts if everybody else is ready. Okay, if no one has any questions, I'm going to just do alphabetically, Mr. Suli, since he's an S and you're a, you're both S's, oh my gosh. You are alphabetical. I am getting no marks today. I haven't even.
As long as we get the dates right.
Exactly.
First name or last name.
Oh, yes, Ms. Shremph, and if you could please identify yourself, because although you and I know each other, not everybody else does, and we would like to hear about you and the work you're doing.
Certainly. So my name is Amy Shremph. I am currently the solicitor for the Board of Property Assessment Appeals and Review. I did serve on that board from 2012 until 20, no, I'm sorry, 2008 until 2020. So I served on that board for 12 years. I was its chair from 13 until when I turned out in 2020. I did go through the 2012 reassessment as vice chair and then chairman. So I have experience with a revale.
And you've come here today to give us your take, your feelings, your opinion about the bill that has been put forward and the amendment by Councilman DeMarco. Could you do that for us?
So I've had a chance to review this bill, and I've always been a proponent of prospective appeals rather than current tax year appeals, for the reasons that Mr. DeMarco stated. It's budgetary, most taxing bodies are actually on fiscal year, not on a calendar year, except for the city of Pittsburgh, needs to be different. So it makes sense, because how do you set your budget when you have to give refunds or get more money? And also, it gives a little bit of finality for a taxpayer too, to set their next year's budget because they will know what their taxes are as well. So I've always been a proponent of prospective. The, I believe the intent in 2012 was originally to go prospective. The words we always used and we threw around in 2012 was 2012 values for use in 2013. And then that got changed, then we did a redo year of 13, and we stayed on the same system. So I think there was some momentum behind it in 2012 to move prospect because 67 other, or 66 other counties do it that way, and it makes more sense. It also is less confusing for taxpayers who might have moved from a different county. They don't understand why we're March 31 and everyone else is September 1.
In your opinion, do you think that the county and the office can handle the, the consequences of this moving the date?
So that's one thing I would like, want to talk about, and then I want to also talk about CLR, and it's the effect of the CLR by changing to prospective.
Okay.
So, yeah, BPAR has the capacity to do it. It's going to be tight because of the holidays. The holidays are obviously a concern. But I can tell you right now, we started appeals for 2024 on April 29. And at the last BPAR meeting, which was last Thursday, we had completed 54% of the residential appeals.
Great.
So we are moving through our appeals, we're moving through them quickly. We also have got a way to go paperless, which we're rolling out hopefully on Monday to our, our staff. So things have been moving in that direction to make it easier to handle. Also, historically, you have a low CLR, which means your municipalities and your taxing bodies are not going to be filing the volume of appeals that they usually would. You also have high interest rates, which means the home buying has sort of leveled off, if not dropped. So for people who are purchasing houses, don't necessarily have the impetus to file a tax NIP. I honestly believe this window will be a small number of appeals, much smaller than on an average tax.
Okay, that's a, and also an interesting perspective when you look at it that way, with the volume. And we're glad to hear that you think that BPAR will, definitely has the capacity to, to roll with this amendment.
Our intention for 2024 was to actually have all of these finished by, with the exception of some wrap-up days, you always have some postponement days and things like that, but to have the majority of our appeals done by the end of August.
Excellent.
So we would actually, because we were actually looking at how we could improve the system from August until March 31 of the next year, but we would, our intention is to have a majority of the appeals done by that date.
Great. Would you, if you have nothing further at this time, would you entertain, or you're talking, you want to talk?
I, I just want to explain the CLR.
Absolutely.
Its application in a prospective year compared to what the county does now.
We would welcome it.
So currently, you're using the CLR that was issued last year. Every other county, because they don't start their appeals until September 1, they use the, the step number that was issued in that calendar year. So you would use, we use the 2023 CLR for use in 2024. You would be using the 2024 CLR for the 25 values, and it would be the most current CLR, because the CLR comes out in July roughly, and this way, every other county does it that way.
That also is important. So we're using the most current, so also, we're going to lessen, from what I'm hearing from residents, we would be lessening their appeal as well, their, and the number of appeals, because some people wanted to take advantage of the, say, 64, and then had to appeal again the next year to get the 52, right? So this is going to, they're going to have a current year CLR, that makes a lot of sense.
Correct. And it's just the way, because now the CLR doesn't roll out until July, we start hearings in April. You can't, you don't know what it's going to be, so you have to apply consistently, so you apply the year prior. So this is actually the 2023 CLR, which is based on 2021 values. If you, if you understand the way the CLR works, so it's 2021 numbers for a CLR to be used in 2023, fiscal year 2023. But if you move forward, you may be able to use it more often.
Okay, that makes sense.
So those are the big issues, and I had one question on the bill. There's a change in Section B3 where it's change notices, and the language changes to 60 days to appeal a change notice. And the current practice is 30 days, and I was just wondering why we were going to change it to 60. Current practice works pretty well. And that's just on change notice appeals.
We had just added, put the 60 days in from a consistency perspective, you know, but.
If the desire is to move it back to 30 or leave it at 30, that can be done.
Would we have to change it?
Um, yeah, but we can make that amendment up on the floor, make your life easier and do the 48 hours and comply with that. You won't need another vote.
Okay.
That's easily done.
Okay.
And again, for consistency, because that's what we have done, and that's what people kind of expect, and that's what all the notices say.
So we can go down to 30 then.
Great.
Okay, thank you for bringing that to our attention, and we.
Is there a consistency? I have an editorial question. So if you're going to do one, of them all. In Section A of the bill, it reads, "Presentation honored before the 15th day of January of the preceding year." And he reads, it reads, "Honored before the 15th day of December." So there is confusion as to the dates being different and what they actually mean. So it's a couple that I.
Yes, sir.
That is actually the way the Administrative Code reads as a result of its amendment back in 2005. Mike and I had a brief discussion about that.
I'll ask the chief assessor, when do we submit values to the city of Pittsburgh and the school district? Do we wait until January 15, or do we submit?
We submit everything on January 15, or they're all about depending on the region. This year was January 15. Everybody, all the municipality, towns.
So the city doesn't know what the values are, and they wait until January 15?
No, it's a certified value.
I'm going to ask.
If I may.
Yes, identify yourself, please.
Jessica Garfoll, I'm the Director of Administrative Services for which property assessments falls under. We do supply the city of Pittsburgh with an unofficial, non-certified valuation rule so that they know prior to certification what their values will be, but they're not the official certified rule. They do get that as well on January 15.
Okay, so in, in the effect there is, because they're uncertified, you're giving them a number that is pretty darn close to what they need, and it's not after January 15. It's, and it complies with the way they budget, which is on a, a calendar year, not the fiscal. So if everyone's satisfied that that's fine, it's been working. I see no reason, I personally see no reason to change it. How about you, Councilman DeMarco?
I defer to the experts. Well, I'm just saying, with, with the language, I was there when this language went in. And at the time, there was an ordinance and Jared knows this, you could only appeal the base year. You know, all of that was washed out, and that's just part of the damage from that. That's my response.
And from what I'm hearing too, the only district that affects is Pittsburgh Public, right? And you have.
The city.
In the city, yes. But there's an agreement that this is how you've done it, and they've accepted Ms. Garfoll or the certified, the uncertified numbers. Okay, yes, sir.
I understand about the city, but that's not what's written. What's written here is on December 15. That's the direction of the chief has set off, the total of the final and revised votes to all taxing bodies within the county for use in the upcoming year.
And what you're saying, Mr. Chief Assessor, is you've never done that, correct?
I'm not saying anything about what I've done and have.
It's always been.
I'm only saying that it wants a final number. The way it's written wants a final, but the final number does not come out until January.
Right.
And there are some, there are, there is a catch-all in that period of time, month. We get changes from order viewers, we get changes from BPAR, we get changes from cat losses, catastrophic loss properties, permits, etc.
May I make a suggestion, if we're getting hung up on the dates, we can also get hung up on words. It shall provide a final number, it doesn't say certified number. And I think keeping it at final, for legal purposes, keeps it soft, keeps it malleable. Maybe if, if there was the word certified, we would be in violation of something, but we're not. Final, in my opinion, is a.
I agree.
Looking as in, yeah, looking for a way to, again, make it a soft landing as opposed to any legal.
I just want it to fall down, stuff a rabbit hole later.
Right.
Right.
I appreciate that.
I agree with doing these earlier.
Got it. Thank you so much. Um, so just to get back on track.
We do what we've always done with the certifications.
Right.
Correct?
So Ms. Shremph, are you finished with your presentation?
I am.
And would you entertain any questions from council members? Thank you. I have none because you and I have talked. Does there anyone else who has any questions specifically for Ms. Shremph? Or if you wanted to wait until, Mr. Suli also made his presentation and asked other people in the group. Hearing no call for questions specifically to you, Ms. Shremph, thank you. And you will be available for the rest of the meeting to answer questions. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Mr. Suli now. If you, if good, it's all good, and if you can give us your presentation as to your thoughts on the DeMarco Amendment Number One.
Yes, obviously, I'm for it, and Councilman DeMarco and I have talked a number of times on this. You're aware that I've written many pieces that were published on what Allegheny County does. This is what Allegheny County does right now. We assess in January, and then we have the appeals, and then we tax you. Assess, appeal, tax, that's what you brought, right?
It was assess, tax, and appeal.
Well, no, 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 I'm saying what we do now. The certification occurs January 15. And then March 31, you can appeal. The appeals start a month later or so, historically, and we can go into the summer and maybe the fall. And so we tax last, and I was correct. It's, it's assess, appeal, tax. That's what we do now. It's ridiculous, it's absurd to send out tax bills. Here's the other thing, historically, the school districts filed a majority of the appeals. In 2022, 90% of the appeals were filed by the school districts, looking at low assessments with a high ratio in the eighties. Over the last two years, 75% of the appeals before the county appeals board, the appeals board. Over the last two years, seventy-five percent of the appeals before the county appeals board, the appeals board, seventy-three out of every four appeals were school district appeals. Period. This is the, the way it's been in the county. I mean, at least since the reassessment, all right? Most of the appeals are school district appeals. Uh, the Allegheny Institute historically has said that the revenues received by the taxing jurisdictions, all three of them, in the aggregate was about four hundred million dollars. So what we do now and what we've been doing is we assess, we appeal, and then we tax on the back end and send second tax bills if the school district wins. You see what I'm saying? I talked to somebody from the county treasurer's office who said, hey, this is great. If, if, if this bill goes through, we won't be issuing the refunds and the second tax bills like we did. Not that I'm trying to put anyone out of the job in the county treasurer's office. But this has been the norm for many years, that a taxpayer, especially in the city and Squirrel Hill and in Point Breeze, they get hit with, you know, forty percent increase in their assessment and they receive a second round of tax bills. And this is, you know, the mileage rate was the same for ten years, but we have this, uh, we, I called it the newcomer tax on high-end properties. And the appeals board knew this and the county knew this, that the base year system wasn't working, that there, there were low base year assessments on high-end properties. Historically, people in the Mon Valley, low-end properties do not appeal. You know, I've talked to many of them and I represented thousands of taxpayers over the years in the early two thousands, before I came back with the county. I represented many of them and they always said, I'm afraid my taxes might go up if I appeal this. They bought a home for fifty thousand and they were assessed at ninety and they were still afraid to appeal.
So Mr. Shrimp, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say essentially what you're telling us about the amendment, DeMarco one, you, you also in your capacity with the county now, you feel that the county has the capacity
Absolutely.
to deal with the, the timing issues, moving up the timing.
Yes.
And you also feel that in the end, the taxpayer, the resident of Allegheny County is going to be better off for it because it's a more common sense approach. They won't be waiting for refunds and having to pay taxes at the same time.
Taxing law.
And the taxing, of course, for budgeting.
Stability and consistency on both ends.
And uniformity.
And those three words, if these bills are passed, if they go through this committee and are passed next Tuesday.
Hmm.
This is a long-term thing. This isn't just one year, you know, that we'll get the kinks out.
Correct.
With Ms. Shrimp, our solicitor in the board will work diligently. That, you know, your, uh, uh, proposals back in February, giving us, giving the taxpayer and the taxing bodies timelines really helped us streamline this process, you know, and, uh, we, we can do this. And I hope we never go back to what I call tax year appeals. Tax year appeals is everything I've discussed. I'm going to say three words if these bills are passed. In January, January fifteenth, our chief assessor, Mr. Fabian, will certify. That's the assess. Okay?
Yes.
Yes. What happens next?
Just a quiz.
I'm talking about.
Not good.
The tax goes though out. Right. And then you appeal.
And then you appeal, yes.
So it's, I know it's confusing, but, but what I'm saying, those three words, you're just moving things around and you're saying, we're going to send you a tax bill that you've already appealed. That's already been appealed. And we can say this to the, you know, forty-three school districts, a hundred and thirty municipalities. We're going to get these appeals out of the way. Most, not all of them, but we're going to get most of them out of the way before the tax bills go out.
And you're confident that we can communicate that efficiently, uh, this change to the school boards and the other taxing bodies?
I'm not going to say I'm confident because I've been lobbying, I lobbied the administration in twenty twelve when we were a year ahead. I have emails from that area and they said, no, we're going to go back to the way we always, we always did it. So for the twenty thirteen tax year, and Ms. Shrimp and I know this, we lived through this. In the twenty thirty thirteen tax year, you were able to appeal twenty twelve and twenty thirteen for the same tax year. And that's why where we are today, you know, no one complained. No one complained when the newcomer tax was adding thirty and forty percent on someone's tax bill. Now, there's a lot of complaints from taxing jurisdictions that they have to issue refunds. They're not used to refunds. They were used to additional tax bill.
Right.
So we're fixing it on both ends. It's not just for property owners. It's for the taxing bodies as well. It's common sense.
Absolutely. That sounds great. Thank you very much for your perspective and being willing to come in and, and make this otherwise, um, complicated issue even more complicated. No, I'm kidding. Um, absolutely. I, um, we, we need, we need to know what we're doing here. And thank you very much, both of you for speaking. Mr. Fabian, would you like to say anything about Ms. Councilman DeMarco's amendment one bill? That hasn't already been said.
I support, I do. I, I support concept.
That is great. I'm glad to hear. It also appears that, I don't know if I can read this kind of into the record, but we have um, a letter from Wade Fargostein on behalf of the Board of Property Assessment Appeals and Review that they would like to extend to the, to this committee. Um, their unanimous approval and support for the proposed bill of, of Councilman DeMarco. So that, that can be put into the record as well. That was good. Um. Does, at this point with the speakers that we've had, do, I would like to open this up for discussion or questions for any other council members that are on the phone.
Yes, Chairman Filia, Chairwoman Filialgi, I have some.
Thank you, Mr. President, Katrina. Thank you.
My first question goes to, uh, our chief assessment officer. Um. You, you said you support it in, in theory, basically, or support the concept. Do you have any concerns other than the one you raised about the, uh, about the language? Anything else in the bill? Or do you see any other potential roadblocks or concerns?
Only based on the number of appeals we might get. I, I agree with Amy that I, I don't anticipate a lot. Uh, residential can be out in two weeks. They have to have two weeks' notice. Commercial require four weeks' notice, which does put us after the election. Uh, I don't anticipate a large volume of commercial appeals, but you don't know. Uh, so I can see this, there should be at least ten days of periods available in, in November. And not, notwithstanding anything, I feel like residential, but there should be enough time, I think. And then should, they're going to have to retrain hearing officers and, um, and all of them. Well, because it's a new year and it's a new thing. I mean, it's, you know. But other than that, no, I don't anticipate issues other than, there's always issues.
Yes.
Add something to that.
Sure.
Assessor said, these are the board's rules about thirty days and all that. You know, August and September, when people are filing, we were talking about this briefly before we came up here. We can have appeals in August and September for next year.
Actually disagree with that. And the reason I disagree is because until the appeal window closes, you don't know if you're going to have cross appeals, which is possible. So if you have, let's say you have a school district files an appeal on August first and then we hear that on September first, homeowner still has a time period to file an appeal and now we've, we've done duplicative work.
But.
So I would suggest that in this case, the issue that you've raised, Mr. Sully, it's kind of an internal matter with the B part, yes.
Yeah.
And you guys work so well together. I know that you'll figure it out.
In my opinion.
Uh, President Katrina, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, that leads, sort of leads into my next question. I guess does October and September, is that, I guess, I, I, obviously I don't know how many appeals we're going to be getting, uh, but does that give us enough time in order to get things done? I just remember being on council in Carnegie back in the day and trying to do our budget. It was like shooting at a moving target with the appeals. And this obviously correct, this passing this legislation that corrects that moving target. But is September and October the, I mean, I, I just worry that that doesn't give enough time to get, for you guys to get the appeals done. That's my concern, I guess. My only concern.
May I speak to that?
Yes, yes, Ms. Shrimp, please.
Because of President Katrina, because even this year, we have already done almost four thousand appeals in
Thirty days.
In a, in a little bit over a month. So we are moving quicker. Um, we're scheduled, we're full schedule. We're running ten, tens hearing officers a day. Full, full boards, they're hearing here, uh, here, hearing appeals every fifteen minutes. So for residential, I don't foresee a problem at all. For commercial, you, you, you always have issues with commercial because they like to file postponements because they don't have their appraisals or they don't have all their documents ready. So those get pushed out a little bit longer. But I, I agree with our chief assessor that I don't foresee a large.
Influx.
Influx of commercial. I, I think the commercial properties who wanted to appeal have took advan, taken advantage of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three.
So the climate is right for it as well. Might as well move now.
That would be my opinion.
And essentially the date, we move, moving the date up is irrelevant, right? It's, they've still have sixty days. The sixty days is what's the most, um.
You can appeal every year.
Right.
We're just moving the deadline.
Right, moving the deadline. Yeah.
Exactly. But one important point, the attorneys that represent the high-end properties, the skyscrapers down, down. Once they get used to this deadline, everyone's going to move their calendar back. And they're going to call their appraisers. And, you know, the first year, there's some bumps, but I, I, I think everyone agrees. Once everybody's on board with the new date, you, you can appeal every year. It's, that's, I'm trying to simplify something.
Shortening the time that the people have to appeal.
You can appeal every year.
Right, right. Okay. Anything else, President Katrina, or was this answered?
No, that was answered. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments that they like to make about the amendment?
Yes, this is.
Chair Filialgi?
Um, yes, um, since Ms. Nakrati Chapkus, Councilwoman, is on the committee, I would defer to her first for the, for for the comments. Yes, Councilwoman.
Uh, thank you. Um, I just wanted to note that I'm happy to be a co-sponsor on this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. It's very encouraging. Um, Councilman Macy.
Yeah, Chairwoman Filialgi, I'm sorry. I would also like to be added as a co-sponsor. This is Councilmember Hallam.
That's great. We welcome.
You can add me as well.
The popularity. Um, thank you very much for everyone's collaboration and cooperation. This is, this is good. This is good for the residents of Allegheny County. Um, Councilman Macy, would you like to comment?
Yes, just a comment. I believe, you know, there's that old adage, if it's not broken, you don't want to fix it. Well, this has been broken, so we've got to fix it. The other thing, if, uh, the other counties in, uh, Pennsylvania are not having issues and it's working for them, you know, what's wrong with carbon copying it and moving forward and doing the right thing for all the taxpayers? Thank you.
I echo your comments, doing the right thing and moving forward. Having said that, is there anyone else who wants to comment on, any council members who would like to comment?
Madam Chair.
Yes, yes, Councilman Paul Messina.
How are you? Yes, I'd like to be added also, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone who doesn't want to be at?
I don't know, but, uh. Yeah, Chairwoman Filialgi, this is Councilmember Hallam. I do have one last question, um, before we move on. And so we've talked a lot about like the B par feels that they have the capacity to, um, to, to get the appeals done under this window. And I fully trust and believe in them that they can. But I was just wondering if there's anything that I'm either missing in the bill or just if someone could explain procedurally, what happens if the deadline isn't met?
Right. What happens if the deadline isn't met? The sixty days, I guess.
Let me, let me ask for a clarification of the question. Do you mean if someone doesn't file their appeal by October one?
No, I don't mean the, I don't mean the homeowner. I mean, um, if the board is unable to get through all of the appeals within the sixty-day window that we laid out, then what happens?
Uh, I'll respond to that.
Councilwoman Hallam, it looks as if, um, Mr. Sully is going to respond to that, okay?
There's already.
I know Mr. Sully would have me. Thank you, Mr. Sully.
I don't think, uh, Ms. Hall.
She, she wants to make sure the county is doing their job.
Correct. And, you know, I'll just go on the record. We are, have made some amazing changes in, in the workflow process the last few months, especially, uh, the, uh, administrative services helped us uh, get, gave us the ability to put the C L R in on every market value, which will really streamline our process. So to answer your question, yes. And we, there will always be some stragglers. There will always be some postponements. There will be issues where the assessor has to go out and look at the property. So it won't be a hundred percent, but it will be, we scheduled it. We postponed it, we rescheduled it. And I think that's the best we can do on our end. And if people don't show up, too bad. But there are instances where some appeals can go a year. Or somebody's in Germany in the service and they file an appeal. So.
And that's a complexity.
That question, there are anomalies, but.
Yes.
I'm convinced we can do what we've always done. And we, and now I believe we can do it better than we've always done. And I'll just let Ms. Shrimp add on anything you want to.
Are you confident that there are systems within your own or within B par that can catch those anomalies and, and correct them?
Yes.
To the best of your ability?
Absolutely. The best of our ability will be able to get appeals out sixty days after, after they rehear.
Okay.
On, now, obviously, obviously this period, we have Christmas, we might not be hearing cases for two weeks. So some of these might back up into January. Even then, for most of your municipalities, except for the city of Pittsburgh, you haven't affected their tax bill because their tax bill doesn't get issued until July.
Okay.
So we have a little bit of wiggle room there to push it in the calendar year twenty twenty-five because it's going to, it, the, those, other than the city of Pittsburgh, those people aren't particularly affected. But you're hearing them early, so the ones you're going to be hearing, are going to be hearing them in January of twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
They'll have their dispositions way before the tax bills go up.
And then in every future year, because it's September first.
Right.
We should, then the holidays are no longer an issue.
Miss Bill, go. Yes, Mr. Sully.
Greatly. The bill that was passed in February says that we decide within sixty days, we have to send the dispositions out within ninety days. Is that correct?
Well, the board, the full board has to vote within sixty days. Uh, from a practical standpoint, immediately after the board votes, dispositions go out.
Right.
But there's a breakdown.
Right. So you don't anticipate a breakdown in the system. Does that answer your question, Councilwoman Hallam, Councilperson Hallam?
Um, I don't know if it answers my question, but it gave me even more information than I had before. So I really do appreciate all the answers. Basically, my question is, are you, Ian's worried at all about those stragglers? That there's, that there's nothing in this ordinance to basically allow that? Like, I, I want to make sure that, that knowing that those stragglers will always exist, that you feel comfortable with the language of this ordinance, that you won't run afoul of the law, that there does give you that wiggle room in this proposed language.
Yes.
I, I am perfectly confident with that because this is, this is appeal filing, not appeal disposition.
Yes.
So the straggler issue becomes appeal disposition.
Gotcha. That was, that was very helpful. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Are there any other questions from any other council members?
Councilwoman Filialgi, I'd like to make a motion that we amend this bill with amendment one.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Do, um, should we take a vote?
You can voice vote that or recall. It's up to you.
Can we do a voice? If anyone, no one objects, we'll do a voice vote on that, on Councilman DeMarco's motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hearing none. It appears the motion is passed.
So Councilwoman Filialgi, I'd like to now make a motion. Did we send the full bill to the full council with a positive recommendation?
So a motion has been made for a positive recommendation to send the full bill to council. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, it looks like all in favor, no, no one opposed, bill passes, ready in, to go to a, to the full council with a positive recommendation. Okay, and then I guess some thought that was the easy one. Um, at this point, we're ready to move on to Councilwoman Hallam's bill. Well, if, if anyone else, um, you're welcome to stay. We hope you do stay, invited guests. Thank you very much. And you're welcome to speak on Councilwoman Hallam's bill. At this point, we would like to start discussion on Bill 13027-24, which is Councilmember Hallam's bill. Would you, Councilmember Hallam, would you like to begin the process?
Sure. Thank you so much, Chairwoman Phili Azzie. I would love that. Um, this is actually the easy bill, in my opinion, of course. Uh, because this is something that we've all known was coming for a long time, that, you know, I'm not going to repeat all the things we heard at the public hearing the other night, but we are long past due in developing a system by which we do regular reassessments in Allegheny County. Um, basically, what this bill does is it would trigger a mandatory reassessment um, whenever the coefficient of dispersion, the COD, gets above 15, which basically just talks about like how, uh, inequitable our values are, uh, how, how far apart our values are, um, assessed values versus the market rate actual values. And so instead of requiring it, when I first was drafting this bill, I fully intended to do it, um, on an every three years, maybe at the absolute worst, every five year require the regular reassessment. But I didn't want to cause, uh, us to go through the expense and the effort of a countywide reassessment um, every so many years if the values weren't too far apart. So that's where we came up with a coefficient of dispersion idea. Um, so as to only have to incur that expense and that work whenever the values demand it. Um, I, I would absolutely be open to a conversation if anybody, um, you know, just based off conversations I've had recently with my colleagues and some of the people even on this committee about, um, changing it to an every few years period, I would be open to that conversation. Um, something I had thought really heavily about was keeping the 15% COD and actually adding a five-year backstop. So basically wording it to say, um, when the COD gets above 15% or every five years, whichever comes sooner. Um, I'm open to that as well. So I really just, um, I'd like to, you know, if any, everyone's interested in voting on this today, I'd be open to that. But I have a feeling that we have more conversations to have. So that's kind of what I wanted to use this committee, committee meeting for today, is to see what everyone's thoughts were, um, especially about that, what triggers the reassessment. Um, but also just any of the other language in the bill that anyone wants to know the intention behind or wants to ask our esteemed experts that we have here with us today. So that's all I have.
At this point, Councilwoman Hallam, Councilmember Hallam, would you like the, the experts that we do have here available? If they would like to speak on that, would you like them to hear what they have to say?
Yeah, I think that would be a great idea, like similar to what we started out the last bill with, is just be like, have you read the legislation? Um, what do you think of it? Are you supportive of it? Uh, if, if not, uh, what changes would you like to see to make you supportive of it?
Excellent. So we can start with Ms. Schrempf?
Certainly. I, now, Council, Councilperson Hallam, I have not had the opportunity to dig into the bill. I'm just looking at what, I'm listening to what you said. Uh, two concerns I have are, are purely legal. One is when the county was doing triennial assessments, those were struck down as unconstitutional. Additionally, the old law, the old county or the old assessment law, anytime the CLR dropped below 15%, it, it may, it automatically triggered a re, a reassessment. And the Supreme Court also struck that part of the law out as unconstitutional. So, and I haven't read those cases in a very, very long time. I just know they're out there and they exist. So I have a concern that tying it to a number could very well be considered unconstitutional.
I, I really appreciate that. Can I ask a follow-up question on that?
I'll answer the best I can.
Okay, no, I will take anything you can offer. So I guess, um, um, my question would be, and I don't know about those two cases either, so I will look those up. My question would be, if you were trying to create a system, you know, to get us in line with every other state in the United States, um, uh, that does regular reassessments, what would you base the trigger upon?
I wish I knew. I, I, I really wish I knew. And, and I'll be honest, I have always supported revows. I, I, I support a revow even right now. But I, I know that in a perfect world, if the Supreme Court hadn't already spoke on this, and, and what I always used to say that in my head made sense, is we did, we ran on a 10-year cycle. We did the North two years, we did the West two years, we did the South two years, we did the East two years, and we did the Center two years. And then by 10 years, you've done everyone. Because doing a, doing a full revow is significant. And it's time-consuming and it's costly. So I wish I had the answer. I'm sorry that I don't.
So, but, um, Ms. Schrempf, um, you do indicate a willingness to, to collaborate with us on council. And so maybe rather than just not, we, we're not ambushing you, but giving you an opportunity to look further into it, you might be willing to come back and give us your perspective on not only this bill, but what your other ideas and what other jur, work in other jurisdictions, correct?
Certainly.
Okay, that's great. Ms. Hallam, do you have anything else for Ms. Schrempf?
No, that was very helpful. Thank you so much. And yes, I would appreciate, you know, I know you don't have much free time on your hands. You have a really busy job, but if you could find the time to maybe look into that, I would really value your opinion.
We will value that, yes.
Certainly.
Mr. Sully, would you like to, uh, say anything about this at this time?
Yes.
Okay, what would?
I've always been for reassessment. All right? And I believe, I, I've been involved with, intimately involved with two reassessments. The Wentworth Miller case, which spawned the 2001 reassessment. And the Clifton case, which spawned the 2012 reassessment. Uh, almost 30 years looking at this, Allegheny County, this should look at conduct ratio studies annually to see where we are, rather than just putting it in a bill and locking it in when we hit this point. So we, we have some metrics. We have the, we also have the price-related differential in the language. And it's either or, the coefficient of dispersion. I know, these are fancy terms, but they're metrics. It's like baseball player bats 300, that's good. Baseball player bats 150, that's bad. Uh, our county, in my opinion, has a shelf life for a base year of about three years. And a three-year cycle, everyone can plan for it. It's labor-intensive, but it's a lot more different than it was in 2001, when we conducted the Saber Project. That cost the county $24 million. But we created a new database for the county. We, all we had was the mainframe system, which didn't tell you, didn't show you a sketch of the property or have a photo. So most of the money, when it was labor-intensive, it was when the internet started becoming more popular. The 2012 reassessment was done a lot differently. It was done much better. And there was, what I liked about 2012 was the Office of Property Assessment, the assessors were involved with the vendor, the company that we hired. I don't believe we have the capacity here. We could just do a desktop and, you know, add 3% to everything, but that isn't how you do it. You know, all you have to do is look at the appeals we have, where before the appeal, I looked at an appeal the other day, I think it was Squirrel Hill, a million-dollar sale with a $300,000 assessment. That's 30% on one property. See, we already know it's out of whack. And you go in the mine valley, and Ms. Hallam and I have talked about this. Uh, there are people that just don't know how to appeal. You can't appeal your way to a fair, uniform assessment system. My dad had a saying, and all I'm going to say is, I revise, the PPS sue the county. Now, we have a choice. We can just go along with the lawsuit, fight the lawsuit, which is what previous administrations did. This could take three, four years, but there will be a reassessment from the lawsuit, in my opinion. So my dad had a saying, you either ride the horse, or the horse rides you. I'm sure some of you have heard. Either we let the judge take over the administration of the assessment office, and that's what I saw in the 2001 and the 2012 reassessment. The judge told us what to do. We had to report to the judge on a weekly basis what we were doing. There were times when the county was stonewalling, and the judge applied some discipline in court and said, you will get this done. Or at one point, he, he, he said, I would be in, held in contempt of court if I didn't finish the reassessment.
So, Mr. Sully, I could ask.
Four reassessment, three-year cycles. Uh, the biggest mistake the county made in 2001, we had annual reassessments. Two years later, we had triennial every three years. And then one, over a five-year period, the county council and the county executive said, let's just have a base year and never reassess again. We are not Green County. We are not Erie County.
Sure. So if I could, uh, Councilwoman Hallam, just ask a, a question of Mr. Sully about your question. We do get the flavor that you're for reassessments, so is Ms. Schrempf.
Absolutely.
But specifically as to the modality of it in Councilwoman Hallam's bill, which is a trigger bill for the COD, whether it's COD, CLR, do you have an opinion on that versus the cyclical nature that some other states and counties use?
There's an old saying, there are three lines, lies, damn lies, and statistics. Uh, the PPS in their lawsuit said that the COD in Allegheny County was 25. The State Tax Equalization Board says that it's around 20. So you already have two entities disagreeing on a metric. That's important. Either you're batting 290 or you're batting 300.
It's probably.
You have to go to court to fight that.
Correct.
If we know every three years, every 36 months, you know, the Office of Property Assessment can prepare. Uh, I think they can do it much better, faster, cheaper than they did in 2012. I honestly believe.
Can you also speak to one of the issues that was raised at our public comment hearing was the manipulation possibility of those values versus the planned, um, year?
That's why you have an appeals process. If you don't like your assessment, appeal. Okay?
The manip, but specifically the manipulation of the CLR or the.
I don't want to comment on that. I was involved in that lawsuit. I'm, I'm a county official now on the appeals board. And that was a different hat I wore before.
Excellent.
You know, there wasn't a segment, I know it's fixed.
Got it.
You know, but we had to go to court and fight for two years, two and a half years, just to get the number to change. And it shouldn't be like that. If you, if you have a reassessment every three years, you purge all of our appeals decisions. You wipe the slate clean.
Mm-hmm.
And you start all over. Similar properties will have similar tax bills.
Got it.
There's that little thing in the uniformity clause of our Constitution, Article 8, yeah, on all subjects.
I hear you.
Yeah, that's all I'm finished.
Councilmember Hallam, um, do you have any other questions for Mr. Sully?
I do. I, I have two, actually. Um, I'll go backwards. So the first one is, um, the, the triannually. I mean, obviously, I know, Mr. Sully can't speak to the data manipulation. Obviously, that is a very big concern of mine as well. I tried to thread some other language in there to try to prevent the manipulation, but I think everyone kind of understands that the only real way to prevent data manipulation, or at least make it a kind of non-issue if it does happen, is that we do it on a cyclical, uh, term as opposed to trigger, a trigger bill. Um, so I guess my question then is about, um, you, you know, we used to do it tri, triannually. And then, um, I think Ms. Schrempf said that that's, that's what got struck down as unconstitutional. And so I, I heard her perspective of that. I was just wondering, Mr. Sully, if you were involved at all during that time when that happened? If you remember that court case, and if, and if maybe you know off the top of your head, how we could make sure that if we do that, that we could prevent it from being struck down as unconstitutional?
There's a, a case, I'm not a lawyer, but someone, uh, Mr. Franklin looked this up. Lancaster County conducted a reassessment of 90% of the properties. And it was struck down as unconstitutional because Lancaster County sent out tax bills based on 90% work product.
Yeah.
Instead of finishing. So it has to be a comprehensive county-wide
Uniform.
event to be uniform. Right now, our January 1st, 2012 is our effective date. All properties were valued on that one date in Allegheny County.
And I think Ms. Schrempf has a comment regarding your question, Ms., um, uh, Councilperson Hallam.
And again, like I said, I didn't have the opportunity to do the research, but I think that the research would need to be done to figure a way to practice to try to ensure constitutionality.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. And then my, my second question, um, for Mr. Sully. Um, you mentioned the, the Savior software, and I, I know, I think you said that was like 2001, that that was developed. But I think that's kind of a, a difference between, we, we got kind of a, a, a shock whenever we heard from Lackawanna County officials at the public hearing, and they were four years into their process. And I know that that, you know, shocked me, but I, I think a lot of other people as well. And I want to point out that that's because they were doing it from 1968, like they, they talked about having it all on paper cards. They didn't have their system yet. So I guess my question is, is the, is the Savior system something that either can be updated or is current enough, uh, tech, technologically that we could use that software for this? Or would use that software?
Let me make one small, small, small correction. The Saber system was canned the first year in the Roddy administration, and they came up with a new KAMA system through Tyler Technologies, which I believe is state-of-the-art. It really is, uh, for a countywide reassessment. So my response is, we do have the system now. It's much more efficient, effective than it was 20 years ago.
And, and do you or anyone else who's here know if that, that system is proprietary towards Tyler Tech, with Tyler Technologies? Like, would we have to do a reassessment with them in order to use that system? Or is that something that part of that $24 million cost gave us as the county the rights to have our bill?
We would have to send out an RFP and give companies an opportunity to bid on a, a reassessment. Uh, the 24 million was a total scratch operation. What we did, did was build a, essentially a supercomputer with 2 billion bits of information that the county didn't have prior to that. When I, when I was on the county appeals board in the 90s, 97% of the residential properties in Allegheny County, we did not have a record of the square footage of the building. That's how bad it was. There were properties on the south side, East Carson Street, and some of those bars, they paid 2,000 a year in taxes. It was because we went 20 years without a reassessment. It was so out of whack.
So if I'm, if I, if I can say, uh, Councilwoman Hallam, since we're discussing this, I did think that we, we were told by at least someone maybe from Tyler Technologies, uh, that although, during our public comment hearing, that although we wouldn't, we weren't doing things or we're not doing things on paper cards, we would still be considered a scratch, um, reassessment because of the size of our county. I mean, we've got 600 properties as opposed to, what do they have? 200,000 properties. We have 600,000 properties versus 100,000 properties in Lack, in, um, Lackawanna County. And I'm pretty sure that Paul Miller had said that we would still be considered mostly scratch.
It depends on what the meaning of scratch is. Scratch was the Saber Project, it was three years. We had to go out and look at every property, photograph every property in the county, measure every property, guesstimate what was in the house if the property owner wouldn't tell us, all right? And we built a new database for the county. That data was transferred to Tyler. That was a scratch operation. When, when I heard that in that meeting, scratch, we would not be a scratch operation. We already have the KAMA system, state-of-the-art, in my opinion. And what we have to do is update the characteristics of the properties.
Okay, so I think Ms. Councilperson Hallam was asking is about proprietary. Will we be able, if we don't use Tyler Technologies, if we, they come back and their RFP isn't a successful RFP, um, can we still use the data that they've collected?
I've asked administrative services. I'd ask administrative services to answer that. I didn't know the question.
So that's a question that maybe no one has an answer to today?
Great company, but we still-
But yes, that was exactly my question, Councilmember Philiaggi. Thank you.
Right. Okay.
In order to do that in the state of Pennsylvania. So you would have to look to who's available, who's legally qualified to be there, and see what they recommend.
And then you put-
It's a long process.
Sure, for sure. And you could also, though, the office could look into whether or not, in answer to Councilperson Hallam's question, the data that we currently have, which essentially is being collected by Tyler Technologies, because that's who-
No, it's not.
Okay.
The data that we have is collected by Tyler Technologies, Pennsylvania.
Okay.
Tyler Technologies provides a massive phaser system that Mr. Suli referenced, IAS World, that they house that data in.
Would we, can we get that data back for us anytime we want?
It is our data.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Councilwoman Hallam?
It very much does. Thank you. Yes, thank you very much.
That's a good question, and now we have an answer. This is awesome. Okay. Any other questions, Councilwoman Hallam, for these two? But, but we also haven't heard from, uh, Mr. Fabian, who I think looks like he really would like to talk to us.
I can't wait. I might have questions for him after, but that's all I have for the first two. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, question. I thought you were giving comments. Okay, go ahead.
Well, I, I support that.
Okay.
In, in the manner that's legal.
Yes, right.
And her question about which state should we look at, that's up to the state assembly. That decides.
Sure.
And item B on, on the proposed legislation, is that a bill?
Item B, Councilwoman Hallam, of your proposed bill.
Any year which county-wide reassessment is not required under Section 8, which you know is a non-reassessment year. The chief assessment officer shall revise and equalize the valuations of all objects of taxation in the county by increasing or decreasing, say. Are we looking for pot reassessments here? How do we change values?
If I may?
Year by year? No, no, this, this isn't council.
You're asking her?
I'm asking-
She's asking Councilman Hall.
Councilwoman Hallam. Right, the question is directed, and, and you, and so you're-
You're looking at a non-reassessment year.
Okay, non-reassessment year.
And that's what it says. It says, "shall revise and equalize the valuations of all objects of taxation in the county by increasing or decreasing," say.
I guess the, I guess the thing, the part of that that would problematic for me is, as in its judgment, like, right? That's pretty open-ended and could be either, I'm not going to use the word manipulated again. We've already put that out there. It could, one person's judgment is not the same as another, right? So that could be problematic because it isn't certain. And it doesn't seem to be what our goal is, is uniform, stable, and consistent. It's, we're, we're infusing a judgment in here, right? Is that your concern? Do you, do you have anything, uh, have you thought about that, Councilwoman Hallam?
Yeah, so what I will say is the purpose of this whole section is because the way the, the legislation was drafted to trigger by the COD. If we are changing to any, you know, three or five-year cyclical format, you know, I don't know that this part is as important. What this was to try to do is to get counsel the raw data by which the CLR calculation is made. The data that was, um, uh, determined by the courts to have been manipulated in the past. I was trying to find a way to prevent manipulation. I know that's been brought up as a concern by many people. If you have any suggestions on how I can ensure that if it stays on the COD trigger track, um, I would be more than open to making the language something that you're more comfortable with. But, but just wanted you to know the intent behind this whole section here is to prevent manipulation if the, uh, reassessment schedule is triggered by that data.
So Mr. Fabian, does that, does that, um, kind of put you in a, in a different perspective? In the sense that if, if this, if this assessment-
Part B could be even a part of this.
Okay.
Because you, the whole thing is to talk about the reassessment. And you address it, you address it in some other manner. Because afterwards, you're going back to, uh, what we, what we do. We appeal. We hear, we hear hearings.
Okay.
If you don't like it, we go forward from there. There is remedy, legal remedy in those situations. This leaves it up to the office to make what seems reasonable in judgment. It doesn't say it involves county council.
So it also seems, though, this provision is already in the bill now? It's just the-
It's part of the administrative code.
It's part of the administrative code currently. That may be something that we've caught, and you've caught, that we can address on any sort of final, um, reassessment effort. Is that okay, Ms. Councilwoman Hallam?
Yeah, of course. I mean, I welcome any opportunity that we have to fix our current administrative code at any time. I also, I have one question for, uh, Mr. Fabian, if he's open to it.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, I just wonder your opinion about the COD trigger versus three-year cyclical or whatever you suggest.
Whenever you put a number on something, somebody's going to disagree with it. I don't care whether it's a COD or three years. So it really is, is a state, it, it gets down to the law. It, it's not a personal opinion that I think matters.
It's what comports with the law, the Supreme Court, what will pass muster with the courts.
Yeah, you've seen that now with everyone filing lawsuits against the CLR.
Right.
It's overturned, they're not overturned. I mean, the state says, no, you have to file the CLR, and now you have somebody filing for recognition. So it, it's, it's a matter of a legal decision.
Okay.
It's not a, kind of criteria that would pass muster, okay, whatever.
Okay.
Put a number on something.
That makes sense. You've seen it. Um, Councilwoman Hallam, anything else?
No, that is all I have. I just want to, uh, thank the experts very, very much. They're very helpful, um, and, and hope to answer any of my colleagues' questions as well.
Does anyone, okay, so Mr. Suli has indicated he would like to say something in response to what the discussion-
Concern about the language, about revision.
Right.
Revising and equalizing.
Right.
That was in the second-class county assessment law. That's been in the law, state law for years. The intent was, if you're going to have a base year and you build a new home this year, that you have to equalize that new construction back to the base year. That's, that was the intent of that language.
Oh, okay.
That's all I can say.
Okay.
Okay.
Um-
Yes, if I could say something to that, uh, Chairwoman Philiaggi. Uh, that was, that's actually a, a very interesting. I was at a, a community event recently where I was talking about the bill and soliciting, uh, public feedback for it. And something that, uh, was brought up by two different folks was, um, something to do with like incorporating into the bill, something about like building permits or, or something like that, in, for the intention of major additions on homes, uh, new homes, construction. What do you think about that? And is that this bill or is that a separate bill?
I, I do think, Councilwoman Hallam, from what I was getting from my feedback as well and talking to people, that's already part of the process. Because those permits for, especially for the major construction, not the stuff that you can kind of hide when you do inside, but the major construction, um, those permits are all filed with a, a taxing body, which would be most, it starts with the municipality. And then they're of record, and those are already taken into account by assessors because they're available to them. It's all public record.
Perfect. I wasn't aware of that. Thank you very, very much.
Anything else? Thank you. Councilwoman Hallam, if you have nothing else, I was going to move on to see if any other council members had questions.
Nothing else.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have question, anyone else have questions for Councilmember Hallam or any of our experts on Councilmember Hallam's bill? Okay, hearing no questions at this time, um-
Um, Councilmember Philiaggi, would it be okay if I asked a pointed question to, um, the, the council members that are on the call about this bill?
I don't see why not. I've not really done anything in uniform since the beginning.
Yeah, well, I, I just know, I just know procedure isn't really to like ask them, so I kind of want to ask you. If you could ask the question. Um, I'm very interested in folks', uh, feedback on, again, this thing that I have been hung up on since the drafting of the bill, which is what triggers a reassessment. Um, and, and you know, I know we heard about the legality, obviously, we're going to look into all of that. Um, so kind of putting that aside, if you, if you're just thinking about reassessments, um, are you more comfortable with X amount of years? And if that's the case, what's the amount of years? Or are you more ca-, more comfortable with a data-driven trigger, which, uh, is what is drafted as, um, which does open up to, um, data manipulation? I'd just be interested in hearing from folks about that. Because to me, I know there's a lot of, uh, you know, in-the-weeds things we could get into about it, but to me, that's kind of the biggest issue of all of this, is what triggers it?
So if I may, Councilmember Hallam, I would not be comfortable at this point asking a question like that. I think that, I think it's pretty clear that we have a lot more, um, information that we need to gather before we can ask anyone to perhaps go on the record with their thoughts. Um, and I think that individually, individually, they can reach out to you, um, with ideas and with information. Would that be okay for you for now?
That would be very okay for me. I open that up to anybody, any of my colleagues, or even anybody that's participating in this meeting or listening at home. I would really like to hear what folks think about that issue specifically.
Great. And so I'm, I'm thinking that you're, it's not any intention to introduce anything today. Are you, would it be okay if we concluded the information session on your bill at this time?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. What else do we do?
Uh, that's it. That functionally holds the bill in committee.
Okay.
Is done at this point. Um, and all that's left is attorney.
Okay, so as we move on and move forward, I want to thank everyone who participated today and who was here to get more information and hear what it is we're trying to do. This is, there's 1.2 million residents in Allegheny County and over 600 properties. This is a very big, or, yeah, properties, right?
600,000.
600,000. Oh, my gosh. Y'all know what I mean. This is-
Over 600,000.
Over 600,000, yes. This is a very big issue that touches a large, probably the largest population of Allegheny County. And I appreciate everyone taking this seriously and, um, collaborating. It is nice to see that going on. So I would like to now enter, say that and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Sorry, I can't tell what's being-
Thank you. So adjourned. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Okay.
Thanks, boss.
Bye.